Welcome to our candidate forum for county commission district 12. So I want to thank you for being here. I want to especially thank the candidates for joining us. I know their lives are busy. Tonight, I'm going to ask the candidates just a few questions. And invite you all to listen in if you have more questions for them. I know they would love to talk with you one on one and and answer any special or specific questions you might have. I will give each candidate the same amount of time to speak. I will rotate the order in which they answer, and I will let you all know that. And I will also be keeping time for anybody who has the problem with being brief like me. So as we begin, I just want to give a quick intro to what Collierville Community Justice is. We are a multi racial, multi ethnic, multi generational grassroots organization that's fighting for racial and economic justice in Collierville and beyond. And we have identified as a group four key areas where we focus our work. One is election reform, particularly in Collierville. We have some very outdated election laws that make it very difficult for minority candidates to be elected to our mayor and alderman positions. Second is affordable housing, which as we all know is an issue across the country and across Shelby County, but it is also a major issue in Collierville. We're working for diversity, equity and inclusion policies in our town government. And finally, we are focused on preserving and uplifting the black history of Collierville, which unfortunately really is only preserved in the minds of those who have experienced it and not in our public spaces. So those are our four key areas that we are focusing on. And I mentioned election reform. We're also just really wanting to support our neighbors and help our neighbors feel like informed voters who are ready to go to the polls. We have three separate elections in 2022. One is in May, one is in August, and one is in November. That's a lot of elections. So this this forum tonight is our first, and we hope will be more candidate forums to help our neighbors feel informed. The candidates that are here tonight are running for county commission district 12. So when I first moved to Shelby County, I was like, why is there a Memphis mayor and a county mayor and a city council and a county commission? And who are all these people? So just a little bit of background on the county commission, there are 13 county commissioners and they serve four year terms. So Shelby County Commissioners serve their constituents in their own districts, but they also serve the whole county by enacting legislation, approving the county's fiscal budget. That's a big one, setting the county property tax rate and establishing other policies, among other things. After the 2020 census, the voting district lines were redrawn. And the new maps put a section of the southwest side of Collierville into a larger district 12. Nicole is going to put a link in the chat. I meant to mention that if you can navigate down towards the bottom where you have options, you can click on chat. Nicole is going to put a link in the chat box where you can go there and type in your address and find out if you're in district 12 or what district you're in. Okay, so back to this election. The first election that these candidates are running in is happening right now. Election day is May 3, and this is a primary election for the two parties. The four candidates that are on here tonight are running against each other for county commission district 12. And because there is not a Republican running, one of the candidates on here tonight will be a county commissioner very soon. So that's exciting. Early voting has already begun. You can vote at any early voting location. You could even go tomorrow between 11 and seven or Saturday between eight and four. No voting on Sunday, but next week, Monday through Thursday, it'll again be 11 to 7 p.m. And Nicole is going to put another chat in the another link in the chat so you can see voting locations and times. On election day, which is May 3, I haven't said that already. The polls will be open from 7 to 7, and on that day you have to vote at your assigned precinct. So please be aware, when they drew those lines again, they moved a lot of polling places as well. So I live in Collierville. I used to be in county commission district four. Now I'm in 12. I used to vote at Southwind Elementary, even though I live in Collierville, I drove out of Collierville to vote. But now my polling location is Grace Church of the Nazarene. So you may have seen something come in your mail from the county, I mean, the election commission, and it has your new voting information on it. If you did not get this in the mail, use the link that Nicole put in the chat at the top to find your polling place. Okay, so that's enough. That's enough for me. I am a nerd, so I have to say a lot of things. Okay. Now I want to get to why you're all are really here, which is to hear from the candidates. And we're going to start by just asking the candidates to introduce themselves to us and tell us a little bit about their connection to district 12. You have only one minute. Okay, only one minute. And we're going to go in the order in which your names appear on the ballot to start with. And so that is Mr. Backus first. Dr. Reginald Boyce second, and Erica Sugarman will be third. Our fourth candidate, David Walker, had an emergency, so he wasn't able to be here yet, but he might join us a little bit later. So we will proceed on, starting with Mr. Backus. Give us a minute about you and what what is your connection to district 12?
Thank you so much, Emily, for this opportunity to share with constituents in district 12. I'm James Backus. I am a 47 year educator where I've worked from. I taught for 20 years and I've been in administration 27 years. And my connection with district 12, I've lived in this district for 27 years. And I have observed the opportunities of it, and now I'm looking at the needs as well. I'm excited about the opportunity to have to to be able to to work with community that I've been a part of. And I know that one of the things I've done all of my life, mainly in my professional way, is being a collaborator. I'm married. I have four children and eight grandchildren. And we're excited about this opportunity to be county commissioner. We ran a grassroots campaign where we've had volunteers was working with us in order to accomplish this goal of getting the information out in the community about what we plan to do. So again, thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you so much. That was perfect timing. The timer just went off. So now we'll go to Dr. Reginald Boyce. You have one minute.
Thank you again, Emily, and good evening to everyone that's on this platform. My name is Reginald Boyce. And I am the father of four beautiful little girls, and then also the husband to Crystal Boyce. And so together we we share families, a party of six. So we our bill is pretty high often when we go out to eat. But as far as my connection to district 12, and even more specific and particularly to Collierville. I'm 34 years old, and so most of my adult life I've lived in district 12 outside of for three years where I passed through the city of Jackson, Tennessee. My first job as a husband and father was at Laurent Elementary and then as a T cap coach. And then serving as a substitute teacher for about a year before being hired by Dexter Elementary to work in the sped department and also run there before an aftercare program, but then specifically Collierville. My entire family and my wife's family is out of Collierville and Piper Town. So the name Boys is is no name that's stranger there. I give you one last thing. I think my time is about up. If you know Bailey Station Road FedEx on the one side, if you're heading if you're heading down toward Pop on the right side. Of course, that is FedEx on the left side. That entire property belongs to my family. And so we have a connection there, and we also have interests. God bless you. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you so much. I wondered about the boys name. Okay, Ms. Erica Sugarman, you also have one minute to tell us about you and your connection to district 12.
First of all, thank you for putting on this forum at the last minute. You did an excellent job, Collierville Committee Justice, as well as Emily Fulmer. My name is Erica Sugarman. I'm running for county commission district 12. My connection to district 12 is I've lived in district 12 for 15 years where I've raised my children and my grandchildren and my son, my eldest son, has recently moved to Collierville. I'm a veteran teacher of 23 years. Well, I've had the honor and pleasure of teaching over 6,000 students. I've been an activist and advocate for parents, students, as well as educators all my life since it seems like. I'm currently also enrolled at the University of Memphis. I'm a doctoral candidate. So I've been analyzing policies at the local level, state level and the federal level. I am also a grassroots candidate. I ran once before, two years ago for city council. It was an at large position. And I garnered over 22,800 votes, and I've been honored with that. And I was outspit by millionaire opponents, five to one. But because of the grassroots efforts, I only lost by 500 votes. And a lot of the area that I I ran in includes district 12. And so I'm hoping that the voters come out once again and support and vote for Erica Sugarman for Shelby County Commission District 12. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I just want to see if Mr. Walker has joined us before I move on to our first question. Okay, he has not. Nicole, I hope you'll ping me if he does, and I don't want to miss that. Okay, thank you so much. We are going to move on to the first question. I want we want to hear about your platforms. This time you'll have two minutes each to tell us what your three top priorities will be to address if you win this election and why. So you have two minutes to cover three things and the why. Okay, so I'm just pointing that out. We're going to go in the opposite order. So we will start with Ms. Sugarman, then Dr. Boyce, and then Mr. Backus. Okay, so two minutes, Ms. Sugarman, on your three top priorities you'll address if you win and why.
My three top priorities, as I canvass district 12, I listen to the voters, their concern about crime, education and infrastructure. So the first question I want to address is how are we going to fund these things? So Shelby County residents send more tax dollars to the state than any other county in Tennessee. Shelby County is not supported by the state commensurate with the dollars that we send. I looked at the financial statements and I was not, I was surprised, but I was appalled. And so as a county commissioner, I am ready to lead the charge to demand that Shelby County's fair share from Capitol Hill is returned to us. So then we can effectively fight crime and stop the gun violence, create an effective educational system, fully fund our educational system where our children can become civic minded and independent as most parents want their children to become. We can then fix our roads, bridges, improve our sewers and water systems, invest in broadband and create a rail system. And so again, I listened to the constituents in district 12, and this is what they told me, and this is my charge. And I want my constituents to hold me accountable. My cell number is 901-292-7968. Thank you so much.
I forgot to unmute. Thank you very much. Now we will go to Dr. Boyce. Two minutes for your three top priorities and why are those your top priorities?
Thank you. So for me, the top three priorities, number one is crime, in no specific order, but crime. Juvenile crime is specifically, also education, and then also the housing issue. And so those are the top three that I am focused on. But let me just kind of hang, because I got a few minutes, hang my hat on the housing issue. That is the biggest piece. I served as pastor of an predominant African American church. And I've served as a pastor since the age of 19, and I'm 34 years old now. So I don't have the long lineage of saying I've been in education and so and so, you know, for X amount of years. I'm still growing up. And so, but nevertheless, out of the 34 years, especially since the age of 19, I have been in touch with people. And one of the things I've noticed is a renting cycle. If you know anything about how to generate wealth, one of the quickest ways to generate wealth is through housing, is by being a homeowner. And so right now we have a lot of turnover. We have a lot of out of town investors who are buying up our properties. And if they're and they're not only buying up our properties, but then also they're charging us two, three times the rent. Now, this is what's why this is an issue, two reasons. Number one, if a parent cannot afford rent, then he or she or they will have to move to another house, right? Find another house to rent. If they have to do that, now they're transplanting their kid out of one school, going to another school, or they have to telefit and say, we still live in this area when they don't, and they have to drive across town to get their kids to school. And that's, of course, a major issue. Number two, the another reason why it's an issue is is because if they're buying up all our homes, for you, Emily, and for others who's listening, there won't be any homes left for your children, for my children, for your grandchildren. And so Shelby County, we have to definitely put a stop to it and hit this housing market and stop the renting cycle.
Thank you so much. We're going to talk about housing in a little bit, too. So I'm glad you brought that up. Mr. Backus, it is your turn, two minutes, to tell us your top three priorities if you're elected and why.
Well, I have three pieces that I want to share. Number one, I talk about drive as a process. So as a board, as a county commissioner, you have to be wedded to a process. I'm one vote. But although in one vote, I have to decide on the process I'm going to use to make to decide my vote. So it would be accountability around the outcomes and the measures that it's associated with. It would be equity around the resources and the access to the resources. And then finally, it would be the economic impact, whether we are sustaining, whether we are seeking economic impact. And the other thing is in district 12, believe it or not, there's still three fault lines. There's crime, there's education, and there's also poverty in sprinkles in places. So all that has to be a piece in my decision making matrix. And finally, there'll be some things that I think that would that would go well. And people talk about policies. There's a lot of policies on the books. So I will be looking at and how are we going to enforce the policies that we have, especially about holding businesses accountable, how their business is presented throughout district 12. And I go through, I walk district 12, and I see it all the time where businesses are not being held accountable for what they do. And then finally, as my colleague mentioned about housing, I would work with the homeowners association around how can we do something about minimizing properties being rented in our area. So that those are the three spaces I'd be working from.
Once again, perfectly timed. Thank you so much. I appreciate all of your comments, and I'm excited that you care so much about all these things because we do too. Our next question is going to be about housing. As I mentioned at the beginning, this is an issue that is very important to us, is Collierville Community Justice. And and we all know there is a major shortage of affordable housing across the county, and Collierville is no exception to that. I think a lot of people assume that everybody in Collierville is super wealthy and lives in a giant mansion. And I I thought that too, before I moved here from Memphis. But it turns out it's not always true. It is not true. There is a great deal of rent rental debt, right? People who were due to COVID-19 had related to COVID-19 financial hardships. And there was some relief for that, and that ends, right? So at some point, you're left with a lot of owed rent, right? And that is a challenge. We also are seeing right here in Collierville landlords wanting to capitalize on the rising market are terminating their leases with their current tenants so that they can bring in somebody new and raise the rent. That's displacing a lot of people who will now not have anywhere else to go. Well, that would be a similar level of monthly rent. And of course, the housing prices are right. They're just rising astronomically at this point. And what we're seeing in Collierville is when something comes available, they are purchased immediately, even before going on the market as second homes, third homes, fourth homes as investment properties. So our families are not able to compete with those investors who can, you know, upbid, upbid, upbid and pay a ton of money for a home that just a year ago wouldn't have cost that much. So all of these things are happening everywhere in Shelby County, but they are also happening in Collierville. And so I would just like to ask you to tell us more specifically what you could, what you would do as a county commissioner to address these issues, particularly housing crisis. And I didn't say at the beginning, but this time the order will be Dr. Boyce, Mr. Backus, and Mrs. Sugarman in that order. So this is a two minute question. And you got to solve all the problems about housing in two minutes. So we'll start with Dr. Boyce on on housing again.
And again, thank you for this opportunity. So let me tell you about district 12 and about Collierville. It is so unique. District 12 is a mixture of so many different people, classes, backgrounds, you know, you have blue collar, you have white collar. I mean, you it's a, in my opinion, district 12 is a county and a city and a state all by itself. If you can literally lead district 12, I believe district 12 will just be the will be the will be the image where everybody, all the other districts ought to ought to follow. And I'll make this quick statement. Top golf is coming to district 12. And so I've been telling everybody it makes sense because we're the top district. But with that being said, and you're 100% right, when people think of Collierville, they think of large homes. And when they think of East Memphis, they think of larger homes. So it all depends on what side of the town you're from. And even more specifically, Collierville, Collierville is two towns in one. We're talking about actually talking to voters and constituents. I've been there and I've been talking to them. And let me tell you exactly what I found out. On one side of the track, this side of Collierville is treated one way. On this side, they're treated another way. You can tell by the lights that is in the system that's in the neighborhoods. You can tell by the water systems that's being used. You can tell by speed bumps and all of that. And so I'm really grateful that you had this platform is because your your area in specific, more specifically, has been ignored. When you were a part of the former district, it was ignored. That's why they did not mind handing you off to another district. I'll say this, oh, I wish I had more than two minutes, but it's a lot you need to know. But I will say this about the housing. What's my plan? First of all, we got to hold people accountable. You got to hold people accountable. You got to be intentional who we do business with. We got to hold these banks accountable. We need to make sure that the smaller banks that we're allowing in our areas, we got to make sure they're actually giving out these loans. We got a lot of redlining taking place. We got to make sure these banks are that we say, show us your reports. Let me see your your pattern, how your loan patterns. Who are you giving these loans to? And then also, now that you have to hold your banks accountable, but then also again, we have to stop these investors. Let me say this last statement, and this is key. This is key. Home ownership is key, right? That's how you generate wealth in your family. But not only should we hold investors and and banks accountable, anything that goes up must come down, which means there's going to come a time where it's switch hands and we'll be at a buyer's market again. So now what are we going to do? And I got plans to train and to educate and empower our renters to become homeowners, to get your credit score up, right? To how to how to have a savings account, how to prepare people to become homeowners. And so let's prepare them so when it happens, they're not in the same cycle. I'm not in this cycle. You're not in this cycle. Our children are not in that cycle. Let's empower them. That's why our campaign is called empowerment is because we want to help people go to the next level. Thank you so much, Emily.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So the next respondent is Mr. Backus. And I'm going to do two minutes and 30 seconds just to make it equal. Blazing a trail there for us, Dr. Boyce. So Mr. Backus, you have two and a half minutes on the affordable housing question.
Thank you so much, Emily. And and one of the things that that's driving this, we know that it's a seller's market, not a buyer's market, especially a homeowner. But for these corporations, you know, they can't do that. There's there's a track we can run on in Nashville. They are they're having the same problem. They've they have not stopped it, but they have a process where they can limit it. That's why I said I would work with the homeowners association, those that's in in district 12 to see how we can mirror some of the things they're doing in Nashville. Also, I asked a question to a landlord says, so how can a person afford 15 to $2,000 a month and not own a house? Said, well, the problem is that they don't have the front money, the 20% now, and and their credit scores are not where they need to be. So some programs around that and helping them how to meet that goal would help limit and give them the possibilities of purchasing the home. One of the key things that I get calls all the time, want to purchase my house. The prices they're offering, I couldn't buy my house back. So it's all about the market right now and how it's going. What we have to do as a commission is to come together and see how we can create a program that would limit these opportunities and also a program that allow our constituents to afford their own homes and not being caught up because they want the landlords, the people want to live in nice homes, but they can't afford the down payments. As we know that what happened in the housing industry some time ago, everything was changed. And that puts them in a position where they are not able to get the capital that's needed to be able to purchase a home of what they're of their liking. But they would they would rather pay, they can afford the rent, but they can't afford the purchase. So those are some those are some gaps that we have to close in education. And also in trying to figure out how do we limit these corporations from coming in and and buying up all the property at such a vast economic, a vast price, just as Dr. Boyce stated. So those are the things that we would have to do as a commission. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Erica Sugarman, you also have two and a half minutes to answer the question on, excuse me, that was not for you. On affordable housing, I'm going to start.
Yes, I am the people's candidate. I support and advocate the working class marginalized, minoritized and the disadvantaged. Through the classroom, I see how policies impact our children, our families, our communities. I see how policies causes disparities and inequities having a result. I have been working, not just recently, but over the decades with policymakers at the local level as well as the state level. I've already established relationships with people who in the real estate industry, Mar, Nayib, also think that, you know, we've it cannot be a, it's not just one size fits all. We have to create a brain trust where you have small businesses come together, homeowners coming together, code enforcement, assessor's office and to to address the housing issues. Otherwise, we're going to become a not only a city, but a county of renters. And we have to have affordable housing. I recall the time when 70% of blacks in Memphis were homeowners. Now it's like 40%. And yes, I'm a numbers person. I believe that it's going to take not only elected officials, but it's going to take a grassroots effort. It's going to take us working together, resolving this problem, this issue. Housing insecurities is a huge issue. And so it's going to take all of us. And as such, I'm open to listening and working and also developing new relationships across the county. Thank you.
Thank you so much, all of you. I'm so excited to hear this because this is something our steering committee is thinking about, talking about, worrying about all the time. We have a couple of historically black neighborhoods and communities in Collierville, which are circled by the vultures of development daily. And we are trying to think of ways that we can empower the neighbors to take control of their neighborhoods and preserve their neighborhoods for their rightful heirs. I mean, it shouldn't be this hard, but it is. So I'm excited to hear your thoughts and your plans on that issue. The next question is it's a little bit long, okay, but But stay with me, it's not just relevant to Carrieville, it will be relevant, I think, to everyone in District twelve. Um, but I want to start off by talking about one of our core areas, which is elections. Uh, in Carrieville, we have a board of mayor and aldermen that make the decisions for our town. And all of the alderman positions as well as the mayor position are um elected at large, meaning that every single person in Carrieville gets to choose and vote for each position. We don't have districts. Um, there are no districts here. So a majority of the population of Carrieville does live above Poplar, north of Poplar. Uh, and that population tends to be majority white and more Republican. Um, and the at-large system that we have has made it so Carrieville has never been able to elect an alderman or mayor that lives south of Poplar, where the people are majority black or brown and overwhelmingly vote Democrat. The south side of town, as Dr. Boyce mentioned, was probably redistricted into twelve because politically we have more in common with the rest of District twelve than we do with the rest of Carrieville. And we've been in District two, we've been in District four and ignored by everybody because we don't really fit what they think we should do. We're sort of different and that's why I live here, that's why I love it here. Um, so we haven't, this little bubble of Carrieville that's now in your district, we haven't had really great representation in a long time at any level. And so my question, all of that to say, my question for you all is, what kind of representative will you be? What is your theory of representation? How will you represent the people of your district if you're elected? So for this answer order, we're going with Mr. Backus, Mrs. Sugarman, and then Dr. Boyce. So I think I got that right. Ooh, I got really thrown off with not having the four. Okay, so this is about your theory of representation and what kind of representative will you be if you're elected and it's a two-minute answer?
Uh, thank you, Emily. Uh, this this answer is certainly, uh, I feel is in my wheelhouse, it's been a strong suit for me. And that is being able to communicate uh with with families, being able to communicate a a common goal and being able to collaborate to uh get the outcomes that that I seek. So uh, the type of commissioner I will be will be this one that is accessible. Anyone that have had any ki- uh known me for any length of time, they know that I'm I'm reachable. I'm approachable. And the key, one of the key things that I believe in is listening. Because we can talk, but we have to listen to really hear what it is uh people are trying to tell you. And just just the other day, I had a gentleman uh come to me and say, you know, uh, why don't we ever see you? And I, and you all are out here asking for votes, but we never see you. So I listened to that and I told him he had a valid concern. So that that's to me would say, I need to be visible. I need to be accessible and I need to figure out how uh the people are able to hear from me and also to give me feedback based on how I'm doing. As as I pointed out, outcomes and measures. I will look at the outcomes that I'm seeking and the measures of whether or not I achieve them. And that will be, that has always driven my work uh as a as a school principal, as a superintendent and working with families and working with communities, measuring an outcome. So I would have to have a process so that it would be quarterly uh town hall, town uh hall meetings where people could have access, figuring out, trying to, the biggest thing is communication. Someone said that communication is a myth that is taking place. So I'm always looking for, how can I communicate? Is it texting? Is it, is it town hall meetings? Is it emails? Is it, is it Facebook Live? Whatever it is, how do I communicate? Because I don't want the myth. Thank you so much.
Thank you, that's excellent. Um, Erica Sugarman, you are next with two minutes on representation.
Thank you. Um, one thing I want to say is communication is important. As an educator for twenty-three years, I believe in informing, um, educating and also discussing the impact. And Emily, you did a very good job in the very beginning in talking about what commissioners do, the impact of the election and those kinds of things. You've been a great teacher. But um, I digress. And so as an elected official, I will be informing constituents about what's coming down. Um, so they understand. And so then they can um be educated in their position. And I'll also explain the impact. And I want to also be able to communicate back and forth so I can understand, you know, what the constituents feel about the policies. Um, already I've heard from constituents about different policies that they want to have interrupted, that they would have in place. And so you have to have somebody that's not only a team player, but can also advocate on the commission and be able to influence other lawmakers and policymakers, not only at the local level, but at the state level. I've also been able to um reach across uh West Tennessee uh to other elected officials and across Tennessee. Um, and so it's very important to be able to have that communication locally so that you can be able to explain people the impact and also how you're going to resolve it. And not only how you're going to resolve it, who's going to pay for it? You know, and that's one thing I will advocate for is um keeping um not raising taxes, property taxes. And how we do that, again, is going back to the state and demanding that we get our fair share back from the state. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Dr. Boyce, it's your turn to minutes on representation.
All right, well, again, kind of, this is my wheelhouse as well. I believe in representing people. So let me tell you first what we've been doing. This is not something we just started, it's what we've been doing. I made my mind up to run for Shelby County Commissioner for District twelve, May of two thousand and twenty-one. So since May two thousand and twenty-one, we've been hosting town halls in different areas in District twelve, which is how we have the pulse of the people and we know exactly what's troubling people from. And this is before uh we knew exactly where the lines were going to be drawn. And when we discovered where the lines were going to be drawn, we went intentionally and talked to those who are, that's, you know, who's who's new to our district and that's how we know. And I want to apologize uh for for your precinct and the other precinct that we, that the Forest One, Two and Three precincts, they were often ignored uh and often passed around as if they were volleyball. So let me apologize to you all. But let me tell you what kind of representation I would be. I told you District twelve has the potential and has the opportunity to lead this county. Strong counties is what makes stronger states, right? So that's why we can look at it at at Nashville and brag about with Nashville and appear that Tennessee is doing well. Well, Shelby County is the largest county. So we can make Shelby County the strongest county, especially District twelve, starting in District twelve. What do you think it'd do for our state? So let's, let me tell you what I'll do for you all and what I'm already doing. Number one is continue to be available, right? And I understand while a office may be downtown, this is where I live, this is where I work, this is where I play. And so people ought to see you at their grocery stores. They ought to see you with your kids, picking up your kids from the local school. They ought to see you walking the neigh- in the parks with your children, walking these neighborhoods. I'm not, I can't be the type of commissioner that's so excited that I finally got an office downtown that I forget to come back home. No, I live here, this is where I work, this is where I play. I will also work uh in another area, part of Memphis, but this is where I am, this is what I do. So you need someone that's available, you need someone that has a pulse of the people. But here's another thing, and I'm talking about a strong District twelve. Yes, we need town halls, quarterly town halls, I've been preaching that forever. We need quarterly town halls, we need to bring the representation, the the, you know, the uh, the the tax assessor office, whoever it is, we need to bring. Every time they have a meeting, wherever, if you have questions about code, we need to have the person over code there, right? So you need to have those individuals in the office. But here's the last thing, and I think it's going to be very important. I think District twelve ought to have its own website, right? So we go to the commissioners and we see, oh, meet your commissioner, here's your, you know, you can contact your commissioner this way. But we, if we have a website for District twelve where all the events that are taking place in all the different precincts, all the different areas, I think that will help. We also need to create a uh, a group of ambassadors in every precinct so that we kind of have a pulse where we're constantly talking to one another and they can say, this is what's happening in Carrieville, Hickory Hill. Uh, and then finally, uh, a business directory. We need to know who's the good plumber around, right? No matter where you are, we need to pass this information around. This is how we build wealth and empower one another. Empowerment is still our goal, thank you.
Thank you so much. Well, we are getting nearer to the end of our hour and I don't have any big questions, but I do want to give you each an opportunity to tell us why you, why should we vote for you? Tell us why you're special and do it in one minute. Okay, one and a half, okay, one and a half minutes. Why are you special? So we will go with Mr. Red Dr. Boyce, you start, Ms. Sugarman and Mr. Backus. That will be our order tonight, one and a half minutes on why we should vote for you.
Again, I care, I really believe uh in the people of District twelve. I've seen District twelve change, change, I've seen where it was, you know, it seemed like it was progressing and now it is starting to uh move backwards. So I really care, this is where my, I raised my children. This is where my wife and I live, this is where I'm raising a family. We have, we are, we're not a part of the great migration going to Olive Branch or Germantown or deeper in Carrieville. I still believe in District twelve, but I'll tell you why you also ought to believe in me. Uh, if we're tired of seeing the same thing, why not vote different? I'm I'm not one, uh, I've never ran before. Uh, in fact, in fact, everybody's surprised I'm even in the race because I'm not political. I'm a public servant at heart, I've been doing this since the age of nineteen. Uh, and that is listening to the people. But then here's the last part, I've been bringing the concerns and the stories and the the lifestyles of the people into the room where it happens. You need someone who can take your story into the rooms where decisions are made. So I don't have to watch a movie and say, oh, well, maybe this is how District twelve feels. No, I know exactly how they feel, I bury their children. I've I've been to their, to their house warmings and now people don't even have 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 house warmings anymore. I'm a part of the Memphis Police Clergy Academy, uh, and I'm a graduate and also I'm a part of NAREB. So I see all of this, I see all the disparities. So you need someone who's in touch. I don't want to just be in the room, I want to bring your voice and other voices to the room. And I want to empower those voices. So when my eight years are up, you can continue to make sure your voice is being heard in the room. Thank you so much for your time.
Dr. Boyce, Erica Sugarman, you have a minute and a half to tell us why we should vote for you.
Okay, now, again, I am the people's candidate. The last time I ran, um, I was given the name Crusader. This is something I've been doing all of my life as the daughter, a civil rights activist who instilled in me the importance of fighting for those who are marginalized, fighting for the working class, fighting for people and their rights. This is something that is not new to me, I've been doing this all of my life. I have been going to county commission meetings for the past three years. Uh, city county electric commission, over three years, fighting for a new voting system. I've worked with women in Carrieville fighting for this. Um, this was a grassroots effort. Um, I have been fighting for teachers, families, and so I'm an advocate. Um, during the um COVID, for example, I did a lot of outreach with churches. So this is nothing new to me, this is nothing that I um I'm trying to do to put another feather in my cap. This is something that's natural, this is the way I was raised. It, now, this is in my DNA. So again, please vote early and vote for Erica Sugarman, thank you.
Thank you so much, perfect timing. And Mr. Backus, uh, one and a half minutes to you on why we should vote for you.
Thank you, Emily, for this opportunity. Uh, as I said, I've concluded uh my professional career after forty-seven years. And I'm a reflector, I I look back and then I thought about uh Romans chapter twelve, verse one, and Paul uh talks about a reasonable service. And and I feel that I still have more to do to meet that mark as a reasonable service. And that's what I am seeking. I'm seeking an opportunity to serve, just as I've served the forty-seven years. Uh, anybody you come in contact with that may know anything about James Backus, they will say he's consistent, he's he's accessible. And he, one thing that he would do, he would do what he says he's going to do. And I always try to say what I can do and stick to that and not tell somebody something that I cannot do. If I cannot do it, I'll say, hey, I can't get it done. So you will hear that from me and you will get the commitment from me, just as I've been committed. And I'm here to do a reasonable service. And I don't know what that mark is, but I'm working toward that mark. And I appreciate an opportunity from District twelve to vote James Q. Backus uh to county commissioner District twelve, thank you so much.
Thank you all so very much. I want to wrap up our conversation with a few remarks. And while I'm doing that, I'd like Mr. Backus, Dr. Boyce, Erica Sugarman, if you would put your preferred candidate, you know, campaign contact information in the chat box. So you just click on the chat button at the bottom of the screen and type in your website or your campaign email, phone number, whatever you would like to do. That way, everyone who's following along can have access to you guys for further questions. Um, so thank you all so much. Before we go, I just want to um tell you how excited uh I am personally to feel like I matter, my vote matters. And I think that is quite revolutionary. Um, Carrieville Community Justice hopes to provide more opportunities for our neighbors to get into those rooms, to sit at those tables, to have their voices and their stories and their histories appreciated and recognized and to know where to turn, whether they find a listening ear and a compassionate person who will um fight for them. And uh, and so I'm very thankful for for your passion and your willingness to speak with us. Uh, as I said at the beginning, early voting for this May third election has already begun. We're about to enter into week two. In the chat, near the beginning of the of our time, Nicole posted some links there where you can look up the early voting locations and times, another link where you can find your exact districts. If you haven't gotten one of these in the mail, it may not be coming. I can't tell you that I'm very confident that it's going to come, that it's going to show up from the election commission, but it does have your updated um polling information. While District twelve is on our minds tonight because we've got these awesome candidates here, I do have to say, there will be other people on this ballot, okay? There's other races. So I hope that everyone will take an opportunity to examine who they would like to be our district attorney for the next eight years. That is one of the most important elections, sorry y'all, in this uh, in this year for me, is the district attorney. Our county mayor position is also up for reelection. All of the county commissions, positions, trustee, assessor of property, uh, criminal court clerk, circuit court clerk, sheriff, county clerk. You know, if you need to get your license plate, you will get to elect the person who's in charge of that and they're going to be on this ballot right now. Register of deeds as well as other uh court clerks. So please take the opportunity to go to the election commission website, look up what the ballot will look like and try to take the chance to get to know some of these people um and get out and vote, whether it's early voting or on May third on election day. And if you need any assistance finding this information, getting to the polls, checking your registration status, the folks at Carrieville Community Justice would be very glad to help with that. Um, our website is callyourvillejustice.org. And we can also, um, you can email us at callyourvillejustice@gmail.com um, and and let us help support you and what you need to succeed. So once again, thank you Nicole for doing the technology. Thank you to our candidates for being with us tonight. And thank you all for tuning in for this really exciting forum that we've got to have. Have a good evening and take care.